Organizational meeting is now called to order. This is a unique Board of Education meeting where it begins without a board president as chair. As board secretary, it is my role to chair the meeting until such time as the board president is elected. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe
Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 26, 2024, at all schools, on the district website, published in the Home News Tribune and Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality. Moving right along on the agenda to item number four, election results. The election results have been certified by the Middlesex County Clerk of Elections. Copies of the election results are available in board docs and on the bookcase in the back of the room. It is now my duty to administer the oath of office to the following individuals who are hereby requested to join me at the table up front. Peter Piro, Usha Sharma, Charles Zeigner, and Amanda Peck.
I, Chief Officer, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of that office according to the principle of liberty and justice for the people. So help me God. I, Charles Zeigner, Peter Piro, do solemnly swear that I present the proclamation prescribed by the law for the office of a member of the Board of Education, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of that office according to the principle of liberty and justice for the people. I, Usha Sharma, do solemnly swear that I am not a supporter of our laws of 1941, that I am not a supporter of the laws of the state of the United States, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of that office according to the principle of liberty and justice for the people. So help me God.
Okay, so I will now take the roll call. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piro?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tofano?
Here.
Mr. Zeigner?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay. Next on the agenda is the election of the board president. I will open the nomination process at this time. Is there a nomination for board president? Ms. DePain?
Yes, I nominate Katie Fabiano for board president.
Okay, so Ms. Katie Fabiano is nominated for board president. Are there any other nominations for board president? Okay, alright. Seeing no more nominations, I will close the nominations for board president. I will now have a roll call for board president. Okay, for Ms. Fabiano. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Fabiano is the board president. Okay, next item on the agenda is the election of the board vice president. I'd like to open up the nominations for board vice president. Mr. Piro?
I'd like to nominate Carmen Alvarez.
Are there any other nominations for board vice president? Okay, we'll close the nomination for vice president. Roll call? Yes. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Okay. (applause) Matthew Goram, Michelle Scott, and Kristy Skirby. Are they here? Okay, it doesn't look like they're here, so we'll just move to the next item on the agenda. Right, is that, none of them are here?
No.
Okay, okay, so we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the public forum. Any member of the public wishing to speak, you'll have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening, Stephen Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. Allow me to congratulate Charles Zeigner, Pete Piro, Usha Sharma, for their most important win and recognition by the public that change was necessary. I'd like to also welcome Dr. Ramanda Peck as our new Jamesburg representative. Best of luck to all of you. It's most important to mention that each of you impacts the entire board. How you act at meetings and in the public count. The respect you show for each other and someone at the podium is seen by many. You set an example for Monroe's children and develop the reputation our district either enjoys or is embarrassed by. Please do everything you can to work collegially and respectfully, and remember that how you act is noticed, remembered on Election Day, and impacts children and staff. Thank you, good luck to everyone.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is the Code of Ethics. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education acknowledge, receipt of, and acceptance of the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
I just wanted to clarify if we need to make a motion to include the recommended but not mandatory items, or if we just agree to sign that based on what is there.
If you're asking about a specific aspect of the code, I don't have that.
It's items, I think, four and five.
Okay, give me a second.
Yeah.
It's on the actual code.
Okay, I have it in front of me. What's the question, please, Ms. Ratner?
So, items four and five are not required by law, however they're recommended. I fully agree with having them in the Code of Ethics, but I just wanted to ask if we have to make a motion to include these, or if we just sign or vote on them based on what is recommended.
So, if this is attached to your proposed Code of Ethics, that is to say, if you are looking to impose a requirement on your fellow board members that isn't contained in the Act, then I think that should be done by motion.
So, I would like to make a motion to include items four and five for public information. Item four is, "I will behave toward my fellow board members with the respect due their office, demonstrating courtesy, decorum, and fair play at all public meetings and in all public statements." And item five is, "I will refrain from inappropriate conduct at public meetings. When making public statements, I will refrain from disparaging my fellow board members or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis."
I second that.
I will second that.
And can I ask a question on that? So, we did discuss this before, and I'm sure all of us agreed that, I don't know why there's an asterisk, this should be the law, but because there's an asterisk, and this is a New Jersey standard, what difference can we as a board make by passing a motion? And my question here is, do we have the authority to change the state code that we are following?
So, any board can pass procedural or aspirational rules that build upon but are not in conflict with state law. So, you're certainly permitted to do that. If the question is, what is the practical effect of this, you can't be brought up on ethics charges because this isn't part of the state code, this is simply part of your policy. So, any more than any other policy, you can enforce it yourself, but it can't be the basis of something before the school ethics commission because it's not part of the state ethics code. I think that's what you were driving at, right?
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Can we have a roll call? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.[813.23][813.23](applause) The next item on the agenda is organizational items. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the organizational items A through D by consent roll call. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to change the meeting start time to 6:00 PM
and the public portion of the meeting to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Ms. Bora?
Point of...
What does this mean for the meeting?
Point of order.
Yes. My God. Point of order. The vote that we just did on the motion, I don't know if we voted for...
For Agenda Item 11. Did we vote on Agenda Item 11? Or did we vote on the motion that Ratner...
Oh, wait. Do we have to go back?
Yeah.
Yes, I think we voted to adopt those two, and now we have to vote to adopt the Code of Ethics.
Do the whole thing.
Yes.
Do the whole thing, right, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So now we're on organizational items, number 12. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the organizational items A through D by consent roll call.
Okay, so motion to change the meeting start time to 6:00 PM and the public portion to 7:00 PM.
I'll second it.
Any comments, discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Ratner.
I think that that's great, and I'm hearing this feedback.
I know this feedback.
And so, I just wanted to confirm that, if we move that time at 6:00 PM, that's when all board members would need to be here. So, just because, for me personally, it's no concern, I just want to make sure with work that people would be able to do that, because I don't want to create a conflict for anybody that may have that issue.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Six o'clock is hard for, you know, we don't even get out of work. It's usually getting out of work and getting here barely at 6:30, so it's going to be hard, but majority votes.
I have a question.
Sure.
So what happens to the members who can't get out of work in time and get here by 6:00? They just come at 6:30?
Well, I think if we can't reach a consensus, we just keep it for 6:30, 6:30 to 7:15.
But if the majority votes for 6:00, but people can't get it till 6:30, they'll just show up at 6:30?
Well, I think, well, I think, because this happened last year also, so we, because there were members who could not make the six o'clock start time because this was proposed, we just agreed to keep it at 6:30, so we didn't move it at all.
So I would be fine moving it to 6:00, however, if there is any board member that would have an issue with it being moved to 6:00, then I would not be in favor of moving it. I don't know if 6:15 would be more amenable, but I don't want to put anybody on the spot, however. I would want to know, because I would not want to make that an issue for anybody.
And I can withdraw the motion if someone can't be here at 6:00.
No, I just had a suggestion. I know your motion is 6:00 and 7:00 PM, but we were doing 6:30 to 7:15, we were most of the times able to manage in that. Could we do 6:15 to 7:00? Even 15 minutes is...
6:15 to 7:00 or 6:15 to 7:15? Just trying to think in terms of, like, do we need an hour? Because sometimes we feel rushed in closed session, and then we go through the meeting, and then we have to go, we would have to go back into a second one, just if we had more time. So if we did 6:15 to 7:15, kept the start time of the meeting as it was, it gave us the extra time.
And if I can give my opinion on that, we were rushed sometimes, yes, but I think it helped us reduce unnecessary chatter and stay tight on the agenda in the closed session. I think it made us more productive. I like the 45-minute, you know, versus when we were doing public business and then going in there and sitting there for three hours till midnight. I think this, and if we need another session, we can go back after the public meeting. So, I personally feel 45 minutes was great. It helped us, you know, stay on track, and I feel like if we could do 6:15 to 7:00, it would help people who are leaving work at 6:00 to skip.
Do you want to ask and take a poll about whoever's having problems with that time?
You can, yeah. Does this have to be voted on today, or can we discuss it in our first closed session and then come out to a vote next meeting, maybe?
I think we usually, because we usually set a time going forward, like this notice will get sent out to all of the agencies.
We changed it from 7:00 to 6:30 mid-year last year, so...
Madam President, so this is not something you'd be able to talk about in executive session, because it's not covered, I want to be exceptions. If the idea is for, you know, board members to check, but they have to check with a spouse or for childcare, whatever, you can have your next meeting at 6:30 and then figure out between now and then whether you're comfortable moving them going forward.
And how would we do that? Emailing each other, or...
You wouldn't email each other. My suggestion would be that the president send out an email to the board members, and the board members respond only to her.
Okay.
And then she can come before you at the meeting in mid-May and decide, you know, what makes sense, so that all board members can participate.
I think that would be a factor.
Okay.
So, I heard Ms. Alvarez say that she's willing to withdraw her motion, but she withdraws the motion, then you can vote on the motion as spread before you, and then you can consider a modification of the start times at your next meeting.
If we had a discussion and everybody's okay with 6:15, does that work? Like, is that something that's possible?
Yes, but... 6:15, so we're doing 6:15 to 7:00?
Why don't we do 6:15 to 7:15?
No, we could do 6:15 to 7:15.
To give us an hour, just if we're going to need an hour worth of time, I'd rather do it before the meeting and then...
Sure.
I mean, you're already starting at 7:15, all we're doing is moving the, the earlier time up, 15 minutes to close session.
I like what our attorney said, to bring it up at the, in the session, come 6:30, discuss it then, and then come out and decide what to do.
No, he said we can't discuss it.
No, we can't discuss it in closed session. So what would happen was, is I would send, yeah, I would send an email out to everybody, and then you would reply individually to me with your preference, and then we would make a, I would make a decision going forward.
Well, I think we should do it that way.
And then it would be, if everyone can do it, it would be an agenda item for the next meeting, it would be modifying that, and if there's anyone who can't do it, then it would just remain as it is.
Right.
But that way it gives people the opportunity to confirm that it works.
Right. So for now, we'll just, if Ms. Alvarez wants to...
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion. Motion to change the start time to 6:15 PM and the public portion of the meeting to 7:15 PM.
I second.
Okay, good. Can we get a motion?
So we're not sending an email to you?
So I can, so we can change the time now, I can send the email and even just see...
A point of order? I'm sorry to do this, but didn't you have a motion on the floor? You need to disqualify that motion, I believe, before you go to...
She amended the motion.
If I may, Madam President? So right now, there's a motion to amend, but there's no motion on the floor. So, I'm going to make a suggestion, has to proceed. So, someone should be making a motion on what is, item 12, organizational items, that'll be moved and seconded. When that motion is on the floor, then Ms. Alvarez or anyone else can make a motion to amend that. You'll vote on the motion to amend, that'll pass or fail, and then you'll vote on item 12.
Okay.
So that's the, I think that addresses your question, sir.
Yeah.
So there should be a motion to move item 12 as stated, and then we'll consider possible amendments.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on item...
On items A through D.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Okay, so that's, so that's good. So that's on the floor. Now, if someone, just hypothetically speaking, if someone wanted to amend it, this would be the time to make that motion.
Then you give a break, then you amend. Motion to amend the start time of the Board of Education meeting to 6:15 PM and the public portion to 7:15 PM.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's a vote now, it's just on the amendment?
The amendment, yes. Can we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ms. Ratner?
You know I was going to be the one to extend this meeting, even though I need to get out. I just wanted a point of clarification, because the calendar that was at the front still had the date of October 23rd, so I just wanted to confirm that that date is changed to October 16th.
Okay. So now we need to take a roll call vote on items A through D.
Right.
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is other board business. Are there any board members wishing to speak?
Well, you can start. You're the president.
I was going to give everybody else the opportunity first.
I was going to go first, but I asked.
Okay, I'll go first. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to congratulate our newly elected board members, Mr. Piro, Mrs. Sharma, and Mr. Zeigner. I know you will each bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise to our board, and I look forward to working with each of you. I sit here before you today, humbled and honored to have been elected as the board president. I want to express my gratitude for the trust you have placed in me, and I assure you that I am committed to leading this board with honesty, transparency, and a relentless focus on the advancement of student achievement and success. Today we embark on a new journey, a journey that will see us leave behind the negativity and divisiveness that has long overshadowed the focus and integrity of our board. Our focus will be on creating an environment that fosters growth, learning, collaboration, and opportunity for all. Transparency will be the cornerstone of our board. We will create a culture of openness where every member has a voice and is encouraged to contribute their unique perspectives. No longer will decisions be made in isolation, but rather, they will be made collectively with input from all members. Together, we will shape the future of our school district, ensuring that it reflects the needs and aspirations of our community. Restoring the trust of the public is paramount. We recognize that trust is earned, and we will work tirelessly to regain the confidence of our community. We will actively involve the public in shaping the future success of our school district, seeking your input and valuing your opinions. By engaging parents, students, staff, and community members, we will build a strong partnership that will propel us forward. Accountability and fiscal responsibility will be at the forefront of our agenda. We owe it to our students, staff, and community to ensure that every dollar is spent wisely and in the best interest of our students' education. Our commitment to fiscal responsibility will be unwavering as we strive to provide the best education possible within our means. But above all, we must remember that our ultimate goal is to ensure the success of our students and staff. They are the heart and soul of our district, and their achievements will be our measure of success. We must work together, setting aside personal differences and egos to create an environment that nurtures growth and prepares and supports them for a bright future. As we move forward, let us embrace the opportunity to revitalize and restore the core education values that Monroe Township schools are known for. Let us bring forth new ideas, innovative approaches, and a renewed passion for excellence. Together, we will create a school district that is a beacon of educational excellence where everyone will have the opportunity to thrive and succeed. I truly am honored to serve as your board president, and I thank you for your trust. And as my grandmother would say, andiamo.[1616.73][1616.73](applause)
Which in Italian means, "Let's go." So, andiamo, Monroe. Let's let our new journey together begin. Thank you very much.[1633.15][1633.15](applause) Ms. Bora?
Andiamo, Katie. Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you.
And Vice President, Ms. Alvarez. Welcome, Ms. Sharma, Mr. Piro, Mr. Zeigner. I look forward to working with you all on the board. I also, on behalf of the board, want to wish a quick recovery to our superintendent, Dr. Chanley, who's recovering from surgery. And I want to take a moment today to put in a little plug for a very beautiful show that's coming, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Peck, welcome on the board. I'm really sorry about that, and happy to have you join us as well. Going back to the plug, on Friday, there's a show put up by the South Asian Student Association. It's called Reputation, and I would encourage anybody who's wanted to watch a Bollywood movie but never had the chance, come to the auditorium in high school. The kids have put up a cultural performance that has dances from all over India. They've kind of based it on a very popular Bollywood movie, Zindagi Na Millegi Dobara. And I'm really excited to see, because I've heard, I've been watching them practice for months now, and they've been putting in a lot of effort, and this is the first of its kind of a show that this club is putting up. And it's a student, you know, association club, completely student-driven show. So I encourage everybody to please take the time out this Friday, Reputation, there's a GoFan link somewhere on the Monroe pages, hopefully, to buy the ticket. And I want to wish those students good luck for all the effort that they're putting, and good luck to this new board. Thank you.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to try and keep it short. Don't laugh, it's really going to happen. Okay, so, expressing congratulations to our new board members, congratulations to our new president and vice president. I really, I've said this, I think, every year, and I'll continue to say it, I think I think we get a lot more done when we all work together. I think it's a quote from Helen Keller, right? Together we can do, alone we can do so little, and together we can do so much. And I really think that is true. And I think we all have strengths that we can use, as well as weaknesses that hopefully someone else can help with. I also did want to wish our teachers a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week that is coming up next week, to our teachers on the Board as well. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to you, as well as any of our staff that is in here and community members that are teachers. Because I believe this is happening before our meeting, the 11th, I have a New Jersey School Board Legislative Meeting, so they usually send the agenda out next week, but I don't know where it will fall within committee, if I'll have it in time. There's obviously a lot of bills and stuff out there. If there is anything that Board members would like me to bring to the Legislative Committee, I'm happy to do that, just let me know. I already have a pretty long list, but I can always add to it. And then, just the final thing, and I know Ms. Bora sort of just actually mentioned an event which I would love to go to, but I'm going to be a little busy this weekend. But I think it's always great where we can learn about each other's cultures, and also when we can support students. And I think that's one thing that I enjoy most about being a Board Member. Not that you have to be a Board Member, any member of the community can go out and support our students at their events, but I would love to get a list of the events that students and schools have. I know we do get that at times. I know, Dr. Lehman, you're good about presenting some of the athletic events and the concert calendars, and that would be my best recommendation. It really reminds you why you're doing what you're doing, right? Because this is an unpaid, sometimes thankless, stressful job, and it reminds you that's why we're here. So that would be my best recommendation, is try to get to sporting events, springs in session, or the concert season is coming up, or anything else in between. And looking forward to working with all of you.
Any other Board members wishing to? Ms. Sharma?
Good evening. I would like to congratulate the new President and the Vice President. I'm happy to be here as a Board Member and looking forward to work hard for the kids and the community, and to do the better job, and learn more from all your experienced members. And I'm here, so happy to sit here along with all the Board Members, and let's work hard together, and as a team member, work together with full respect and understanding. We may agree in few suggestions and discussions, we may not agree, but full respect will be, you know, the best bid that to work as a team together. So thank you, and congratulations.
Any other Board members wishing to speak? And Dr. Peck, I do apologize, I skipped over your name, but please, welcome to the Board. Okay, then the last item on our agenda, it's the next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for May 13th, 2024, beginning at 6:15. So, that's it. Have a good night, everybody.